We'll figure out how to turn the microphones on and then we'll start the meeting two minutes early. If anybody else comes in, you've got to say it all over again. Okay, so this is the June 24th meeting of the Woodland Park Planning Commission in Council Chambers. We will go through, let's see, it's a hybrid improv, never mind. Order and roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll begin with John DeVoe.
I'm here.
Ken Hartsfield.
Here.
Lee Brown.
Here.
Al Bungee.
Here.
Ellen Carrick.
Here.
Larry Larson.
Here.
And I'm just going to ask all of the commissioners to speak right into the microphones. Thank you.
We'll go to item two, which is the approval of the minutes of June 10th. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes?
I have a correction. Just given there's a reference to a concept I didn't refer to. So in the paragraph of the work session, just starting Commissioner Brown, I would ask that the second sentence be revised to read. He also stated that the policy would need to be clearer, period. And with that, if no other thing else, with that, with that correction, I propose the minutes be approved as presented.
Second. Questions? Anybody? All those in favor? Kazig by signing yes. Yes?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Approved. Public hearings. Hey, consider ordinance number 1397 repealing the 180-day occupancy limitation as it relates to the definition of recreational park trailers and recreational vehicles. Okay, at that point in time, it will start off with the staff's presentation.
Thank you. Just a quick overview of the last month and a half, beginning on May 27th. The planning commission had a public hearing for ordinance 1397 scheduled, and there was quite a robust discussion about the legislation to amend or repeal the 180-day limitation, occupancy limitation. So what happened was the planning commission decided to table this ordinance and hold a work session on June 10th. So the minutes or notes that you just approved were for that work session, which was also quite an interesting discussion with the group for a couple of hours regarding perhaps implementing an administrative policy. What came out of that was a follow-up meeting with Jeff and Jean Baldwin with the staff, and we discussed the possibility of issuing what I call a status quo letter or a baseline letter. I have provided you with a draft of the baseline status quo letter, which basically established that the city's position, the staff's position, would be such that the existing and future campers would be able to stay within the campgrounds as long as they'd like. No evictions would take place. That the vehicles, the RVs and the trailers would be registered, insured, and mobile so they could evacuate the campground or RV park if necessary. And that the campground spaces, number of spaces and the land use does not expand. And lastly, that the upkeep, care and condition of the property would be maintained. And our three campground owners and managers do do a very good job of managing and maintaining their properties right now. But the city does have junk vehicles and rubbish and noise ordinances that can be enforced. So what we've proposed in this status quo letter is that the campgrounds can continue to operate and exist as is, unless they propose to modify or deviate from their current site layout or type of units. So it's that they would then have to go through a public hearing process to either amend the PUD, Planned Unit Development, as is the case with Woodland RV, or amend a conditional use permit, which is the case at Diamond Campground. They were issued a conditional use permit in 1976. Or in the case of Bristol Cone, should they want to modify their site or use, then that would establish a new conditional use permit since there is no land use entitlement to that property since it's been there quite a, quite a period of time. We, staff believes this is an equitable approach and would recommend to the planning commission to approve ordinance 1397, which repeals the 180-day occupancy limitation with the understanding that status quo letters or baseline letters will be sent to each property owner and establish their ability to continue to operate as is. So I'm happy to answer any questions. We certainly have debated and deliberated over this topic for quite some time.
Sally, I have a question. Just you, we, you were elaborating a little bit on et cetera. That's just kind of to make sure anything that falls through the cracks or that is thought of at a later date can go in the letter.
In the land use, right now Bristol Cone, for example, is zoned community commercial. So maybe they want to add, let's say, a propane distribution system that would require a conditional use permit.
Okay, okay.
Anybody else have questions?
Mr. Chair, Sally, under the paragraph titled Changes to Existing Land Use, it talks about adding more than four park models. Is there existing four or are we going to add four additional?
No. So this is specific to Woodland RV, which currently on their site plan, they have four park models. The intent of that is if they add more, five to however many, then an amendment.
If they add an additional park model.
Yes.
If they add more than four additional units. So if we could just clarify that, I think that would be in order.
That's my input. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Not for the president.
All right. Is that it?
Yes.
Your questions for her for now? Okay, at this point, we normally go to an applicant's presentation. Who's going to talk? Am I going to talk?
With the legislative item, we don't have an applicant.
It says right here. Okay, so we don't have one. And now we can ask questions from over down here now. Do we have people that have signed up to speak on the public hearing? Signed up back there. Okay, she's got to get that first. Thank you. Carl Kirmer. Did I squatter that too bad? You have to come up here so we can capture it on the recording.
Hey, how you doing, sir? Carl Kirmer. So, pretty close.
Shady, is that your current address?
That is my current address. Yes, sir.
Very good.
So in reference to this, been trying to follow along. This is new to Woodland Park, pretty much. Just been here three years. So this is my first time venturing into the public realm, and I would just like to, I've been following in the newspaper, maybe a little late in the game here, and I apologize for that, but I would just like to offer my opinion. I would not like to see that the 180-day be repealed. What you're doing then is making it permanent. So you're going to have RV, RVs in these spots permanently if you repeal the 180 days. And that may just be, I understand there's a lot of technicalities behind this, and there's a lot of laws, a lot of money, I understand. But what I'd like to say as a resident here of Woodland Park is that once you remove that 180 days, then it becomes permanent. And an RV, an RV park, an RV land, an RV spot will be your next mobile home. And I don't think that that's what is desired. So that's me as a resident sharing my opinion. And just like for you guys to know that I don't, I don't agree with repealing the 180 days. If it's a, if it's a recreational vehicle and it can move, move it to the next spot. Move it between RV parks. It's mobile. Keep it that way. Don't make it permanent. That's my opinion. And I thank you for your time and let me share my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Martin. The microphone probably won't need to come down.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, pull that thing down. There you go.
Linda Martin, Woodland Park. I'm very disappointed that we are going along with the business owner who has been doing stuff that doesn't follow the zoning regulations for, as he says, the last 50 years. As a property owner, I need to be aware of zoning regulations, and I need to follow those because my ethics tell me that I need to. Major League Baseball right now is having some issues with the pitchers putting goop stuff on the balls. I'm sure you're all aware of that. That means that the batter isn't getting a good batting average. So what's the Major League Baseball doing? They're not going along with what the pitcher is doing because it's unethical because it goes against the standards of the books. We are now rewriting the books for the entire community in order to make sure that RV park owners get a good selling price for their property. I'd like to know if this letter that is being proposed, is that following the owner or is that following the park? So in other words, when a park is sold to someone, does that letter follow the new owner? Or does it stay with the park? How's that work?
Ask Sally.
It would follow the land, so it would be, go with the use.
So the trailer park that it becomes inevitably can unfortunately lower the value of my home. There are certain members of this commission right now, sitting right here, who are fighting like mad to make sure that the park owners are able to sell their property at a good price. Who's fighting to make sure that homeowners can sell their properties at a good price when more and more trailer parks are kind of going to come into this town because we're dropping the 180 days? Ethics, morals? I was raised with them. Thank you all.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else want to get up and speak? You don't even have to sign up. You've got to tell us who you are. Okay, I don't hear anybody, so I will close the public comment period.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, there's no one on Zoom who wishes to speak.
Okay, so the public comment is closed. We would normally ask for rebuttal from applicants, but we don't have any applicants, so we can't do that. But if anybody else wants to talk about it, you can certainly come up and talk about it. Okay? At this point, the commissioners would ask any final questions from anybody. Who wants to start that off? Why, no, you do. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a question on baseline status letter. I'm not familiar with this technique. It has no, what's the binding status or how is this enforced?
It's very common that staff will write a letter regarding legal non-conformities. So it's pretty similar to that. For example, we may have a house that is not meeting the setbacks. So the staff would write a letter saying your home is legal but non-conforming because if it were to burn down, you would not be able to build it in the exact same footprint. This is a little bit similar to that. It's kind of putting these property owners on notice that this is how the city staff expects you to operate and use your land as RV parks and campgrounds. But if there are any deviations from the way they are utilized today, including adding park models, wanting to add park models, they would have to come forward through a public hearing process and meet the criteria for a conditional use or an amendment to the PUD.
Ken, I believe you said that you recommend approval of ordinance 1397 with the understanding that status quo letters would be issued.
Yes.
Not familiar with how to interpret the word "understanding" when we're passing an ordinance.
Well, with the intent, I mean, we can erase that. You don't have to put that in your motion if you're uncomfortable with that. I just wanted to provide something to the planning commission that would give you reassurance that these properties would not change without a public.
So why aren't we including that in the ordinance?
Then that would become codified, and our city attorney has advised us not to codify special conditions or unique aspects to a property that doesn't apply if it were just a simple, typical application for a new RV park.
So city attorneys basically said we can't make it code, so we're creating another method of doing the same thing without creating a code.
Correct.
In a sense.
So I'm not convinced that's the proper way of doing it. I know attorney says that's the way it should happen. It sounds like it's a an unorthodox way of creating that code.
And look at it as a compromise so that it's not codified into legislation, but it provides some assurance to the property owners that their tenants are not going to be evicted, even based on the existing language that is not being repealed for temporary, short-term or transient use.
Thank you.
Ken, I think Sally's very important point was that it's not being codified and that this is a compromise. How to solve this particular problem and this solution would do that. And I also recommend where we have the word under the recommendation, where we have "understanding", why don't we cross that off and put "requirement"?
You're still in the right direction.
The requirement of a status quo.
Do you have other questions?
I have none.
Okay. Lee?
No, nothing further.
A couple of things. Just observations, if you will. This has been this way for decades, and nobody's ever said we can't do that.
Nobody said we could.
Yeah.
But no one said you couldn't.
Nobody said you couldn't. But anyway.
They didn't enforce it.
I'm concerned that after you folks, and I think only one part's represented here that are correct, that you've spent a lot of time, watched that place improve, you've done a lot of good things. I want to make sure that you can sell it. Now, the way I'm understanding it is that you can sell it that goes with it, but they can't change it unless they come and talk to us over what it is right now. And that gives us control. It's not going to be a trailer park. It's an RV park, okay? From that standpoint, it accomplishes all that from that standpoint because I think having a couple, two or three, we don't have any, where else are you going to put one in this community? The land availability doesn't exist anymore because of the infill that we got left, is that... I think Woodland Park is a festive place. I think you come here, they come and they stay, they stay for a weekend. They come out here for the summer. They go home. Some of them do, some of them don't. I'd like an RV park. I like recreational vehicles because I think it's good for our community. I would hate to see them become three mobile home parks because that isn't going to do a whole lot outside of provide more housing, and I think that's kind of a boring way to do that, so. I think keeping this up as a, as a place where it is recreational is good for our community, okay? And we've got the, the plans building this into it, that they're not going to change it from a baseline. So these people still have the right to sell their land, just like you would have the right, Linda, to sell yours as long as it's kept up and the neighbor next door doesn't screw it up for you. We all look at that or their owners up here to do that, and that's important that we do that. If we do nothing and turn this down, we're giving city council the ability to just say, okay, they're going to pass 180 days probably anyway and take it out of there. But we haven't been able to give them any good direction, and that's what we are, the planning commission, to do those kinds of things for folks. But that's just where I'm at. I don't, I can't see what you put together, requirement or whatever we call it, is not going to give us the control as a city to maintain what you guys have maintained. And if they try to change it, and you're compromising a little bit on this too, they have to come to us and have to reset it, whether it's this owner or any other owner after that. And I think that gives us a control that we probably haven't had for 40 years, seriously. And we haven't. Anybody else?
I'd like rebuttal, sir.
Well, you and I are debating, but that's okay.
Well, I'd like to respond to your comments. How's that? You mentioned you like the RV parks and coming for the summer, spending a week, you know, this. And by eliminating 180 days, we're letting them stay permanently.
Or let them stay longer than?
undefined length of time.
Sure, of course. They're doing that now.
Right, which since past testimony said less than eight years. I think that the short-term RV use is what you were espousing to as a good thing. You didn't fully address the long-term residence. So while it may not become a RV park, because we're not, I mean, excuse me, a mobile home park, it'll be a permanent RV park. I think it has the potential to be worse than a mobile home park by having those same vehicles stay there, smaller stature, smaller look. So it's not something I'd like to see happen there. By passing the 180 days, in a sense, we're just taking the direction from city council. I don't get paid by city council. I volunteer my time here, and I use my judgment on what's appropriate. So basically, we're saying 180 days doesn't matter. They can stay there, update years, whatever that timeframe is. And then we're going to create an agreement letter. What we should be doing is creating an ordinance which codifies this requirement. We're basically taking the existing recreational use, temporary use of these spaces, and making it full-time, which is a code change. By taking away the defined length of stay, I think we should take a conscious look at rewriting the code to make full-time usage appropriate. But then going back to the original intent of the ordinance, it's a short-term, really, or short-time usage. People stay 180 days seems generous to me from what my understanding of that code is. So I think we should keep that, that zoning in place, and if these property owners want to change it, we should have a new ordinance which allows the permanent use and let them go through the rezoning process to establish these properties as is or as they would like to have it. So I guess that kind of summarizes my, my thoughts and opinions at this point.
That's fine. Question, Carl?
Yes, sir.
Of the 40, how many are 44 or something like that there? How many of those people? What's the turnover? How many people have you, has been there for the last eight years?
Well, I've been there for eight years, from May 1st through October 16th, and that would make me the oldest tenant or resident of Woodland RV Park.
You turned the park over so many years. I mean, four months, we got fresh new people in that kind of stuff.
I mean, this time of year, we get a lot of turnover. You know, I mean, it's seasonal. Like I had told you before, we have a number of tenants who are CARES students, and that's two, three-year program. And after their two or three years... And after their two or three years, they're gone, you know? But I guess I'm the oldest resident there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just, I see people, I see people come into these parks and we used to park when our kids were still around us. We used to travel and do this stuff.
Can't hear you.
I used to do this when we were, our children were younger. And if I go through the campgrounds up here, there are motorhomes there that cost more than most of our homes. They literally, those are six, seven, $800,000 motorhomes. They're not going to become trailer trash, I'm sorry, they got too much invested in it to do that kind of stuff, they just don't. And like you, and I think you've got the example there, it can't be older than 10 years or you don't let it in the park. And if anybody's priced new campers lately, I just mean something that's 20-foot long, you're going to pay 50 grand for it. So, I don't think we're looking to attract homeless. I don't think that's what's going to happen there. We've got to make sure it doesn't become that. Okay, we got to keep ways to do it. We've got an attorney, our attorney, and I've learned a long time being on council. Jeff, you have too. You start going against the attorney, you just better make sure you're darn right because they can come back and burn you. And I mean, they're the legal counsel, they know what they're doing. They're making suggestions up so the city doesn't get sued over this as well. And that's why I look at it as a compromise. Right now, see, you just can't sell it, you just got to stay here forever, you got to be well all the time, Jeff. But what I'm saying is, this has been going on for, how long has Bristol Camp been here? How long has Diamond Campground been here? When have we had a problem there? How many fights have we had to throw people out of your park in the last year? Probably zero, zero. Okay, and we want to keep it that way, of course. But, so I just, I hear your concern, I hear your concern. I hear our attorney saying he doesn't want to go that way.
Well, you have to ask attorneys the right question to get the right response.
Well, that's, that's a nice way of covering that, but she already did supposedly. Now, you're questioning what she does with the attorney, that's not our purview to do that.
Well, I'm saying attorneys answer the question they're addressed. And if you don't ask the question, you may get, not get the answer you're anticipating. So, there may be other options on how to proceed with this that have not been addressed to our attorney.
And just a comment about moving into the code review, on the land use code review with our consultant. They might have some ideas as to how to codify some standards for campgrounds. So, there is a way that maybe we can look at creating legislation for this. But it's likely that it wouldn't apply to these campgrounds, it would be new campgrounds. And I have had three other inquiries over the last few years for new RV parks.
Mr. Chairman?
And, okay.
What does it, in my mind, the best way to protect some elements of non-permanent usage going forward for the, for the present, in the current environment, given where I understand the city council's view is, is to restore us essentially to the status quo ante where we were, where we were nine months ago without the 180-day reference. I don't think it's a bad idea, but I think it's a good idea having it in. But removing it is necessary to preserve, to preserve the ordinance as it existed, as it existed formally. I think there's a lot to be said for considering an ordinance that does deal with permanent, permanent placement of RVs and there's a lot of those to consider. I've tried to do a lot of looking on the internet of different ordinances, different localities and how they handle. I don't see a lot of movement to say, to saying we'll move with no regulation, we'll move from a limited period to unlimited period. There are a number that don't have any limitation on them. Many of those have various requirements, regulations that go with them, the sort of things we would need to look at. I'm not, I don't see it terribly likely that this city is going to get there right away. By preserving the language we had before, which calls for temporary transit usage, it increases our chances, I think, of being able to look at that at a reasoned manner over time. And it's for that reason that I'm inclined to vote for the ordinance as proposed. And I would not be referring to the status letter from the city planning department as a requirement, probably not even as an understanding. Or where they're going to do that, that's part of the process of they're doing their job, they're working with the local business owners. Result of that being some understandings that the city council may develop on how these things are handled. That's fine if they do that. I don't think, I, I don't, for the, part of the reasons you've mentioned, it's not, it's not a code provision that we're directing that there be some secondary language in letters going back and forth. We're aware that that's going on, even if we hadn't said so. I'd expect the planning department to do what they have been doing is trying to work out an arrangement, a compromise that seems to be satisfactory to as many people as possible. But I, but I, I think to just, to bring us back to the ordinance the way it was before is probably the best way for us to go for it in my mind and leaving room to do exactly what you're saying. And what some commenters have said as well here too is, an ordinance, we could have an ordinance that dealt with long, longer-term usage of these RVs. So, that, my general thoughts.
You'd be proposing eliminating the baseline status letter from the
I would not, I would not, I would not refer to it in a motion than I would do. I would, out of a motion, essentially adopt the ordinance as it was presented in the, in the, in the package. And I would trust that our planning department would have appropriate, appropriate letters with, with business owners that are covered by this.
And that would leave the transient aspect in place. While this letter of baseline status, in a sense,
Essentially, it would allow them to continue as long as they have been doing something for a period of time. It's, it would indicate as things stand today, we don't plan on enforcing something different. I, I, I'm not sure we would need to put those letters in place if it's helpful and the planning department chooses to do that with advice of council. And I guess that's the way they go. But by taking out the 180, it still leaves the ordinance as it had been before. And something we can look at another day and if, perhaps if we're aggressive, we can look at trying to, probably not this year with the comprehensive plan going on and other things going on. But unless the consultant brings some good language to us in this area that we find attractive and forms a good baseline to go ahead, let's look at it for 2022 or 23, if we're still here.
I guess, I don't want us to be out of the loop with the council. I would like to see us still be able to say to the council, we want to continue working on this, we're going to keep you informed. We'll look at the comprehensive plan, is there anything we can do? So that we are taking the lead, not being out of the loop anymore and just saying no and give it back to council. I want us to stay involved and give them something that I think we've got far, far more experience with us here than we really do have on council, okay? And we can give them good advice as we do more research because we'll have more time to do that because there's a planning department. We've got the input from Sally and I just think we can get more done by being able to do that. I don't want to be out in the cold and they just said 180 days is gone and it's over with. That isn't what we're trying to accomplish. We're trying to make this better and give a long-term plan that doesn't, this doesn't happen again. And that takes more than this amount of time to get it done, that's all.
Are you proposing that we continue this discussion beyond tonight?
Not on this issue, but on doing it under the direction of council, a request that you can make when you go to council that you'd like us to continue and work on that. If we get there, if we get there, green light to do that, then we'll continue doing it. You know, and probably in a more in-depth way.
For new RV parks. It, once we continue the discussion, is that what you're saying? For new ones, not these three, yeah.
Well, that, probably for new, but maybe not necessarily. The status quo ante goes, goes back in place. We're in, we're in the same position as we were 10 months ago.
Do with the baseline. He's trying to form a baseline that we can all live in, right? My great brother.
Just to acknowledge how the current three campgrounds and RV parks are currently operating.
Anything else from anybody? If not, I entertain a motion. And since you've got all these ideas, you can start there.
John, you need to speak in your microphone.
I know.
Thank you.
All right, to put it on the table, and this is some, understanding that people may wish to amend the motion. But I will move that the draft ordinance number 1397, series 2021, as included in our package, be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Anybody want to amend anything, discuss further, or we want to call the question?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, who was the second?
What?
Thanks, Al.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And before you vote, if there are dissenting votes, I would, we would appreciate you explaining why you dissented, just so that gets captured in the minutes and is able to be shared with the city council.
Yeah, my understanding is after a motion, people could still have discussion.
Yes, yes, you certainly can, we have a call to question.
So, what are you asking the chair to do?
Oh, well, ask if there is any further discussion.
I thought I did, but I shall do it again, any further discussion?
No.
No.
No. Paul, what'd you say? None?
None.
Ken?
Then I agree with you.
Mr. Chair, in light of Sally's request, I cannot support this ordinance. And to explain my pending vote, I think 180 days goes back to the original intent of the ordinance that the non-enforcement of the ordinance as it's been in the past is not a reason to grandfather the non-conforming use into the future. We referenced city attorney and she made statement or referenced that because they have not complied with it, does not give them the right to not comply. So, I think going back to the original ordinance, by stipulating a length of stay is appropriate and that future ordinances can be drafted to address this issue. But by eliminating the 180 days, it's not addressing the issue fully.
Anybody else for a comment?
RVing has changed significantly in the last decades. It, it used to be that you would just go for a weekend or a week. In the last 10 years, especially the last couple of years, that's changed immensely. And for any business, we, even though we're talking about RVing, any business that doesn't adapt to the change in the marketplace will go away. And, and I think, I don't think that's necessarily bad because if we have good businesses or good people driving a behavior that's right for the community and for what's happening, I don't think that's a bad thing, I think that's a good thing. Because governments can be stagnant and business can be more flexible and move faster and get us to the right place faster. And I believe the, the campgrounds here in Woodland Park have probably done a very good job of that. Now, should have, maybe they brought it up years ago and went for a change in amendment, possibly. But I don't think that changes where they've gotten their business to, to adapt to what RVing is today because long-term RVing is very commonplace and is going to be, even become even more commonplace. And, and we have to make sure we're, as a city and a community, being up with the times on what's happening in the world and in the United States, and that's really is what's happening.
Which is a good argument for a revised ordinance.
It is. Can we call for the question now?
Certainly.
Okay. Can't hear you.
Mic's not on.
Sorry, turn.
Moved by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Bungy, that the city council approved ordinance 1397, series 2021, repealing the 180-day occupancy limitation period. Starting with Lee Brown.
Yes.
Al Bungy.
Yes.
Ellen Carrick.
Yes.
Larry Larson.
Yes.
John DeVoe.
Yes.
And Ken Hartsfield.
No.
Thank you, passes, Mr. Chairman.
So, the first reading of this ordinance is scheduled for next Thursday at the city council meeting. And then the public hearing will be scheduled for August 5th. So, please do come back and speak to the city council. We encourage you to stay involved and appreciate it very much, thank you.
At this point, you guys can get home if you want to, we got to keep working. We're at the reports section of this. You know, I may take over at that point.
Well, there are a few, a couple of pieces of information on your desk this evening. First is our May monthly report from the planning department, which is titled, "B booming month of May." We have had, let's see, $5 million worth of activity in the month of May alone. Usually, we get about 30 zoning development permits a month. This was 47 or nearly 50 that month. And June is playing out to be just as busy. The other thing we highlighted is the potential for 131 new residential units that are either planned or under construction. So, pictured on the top of the monthly report is one of the duplexes that is under construction at the Habitat for Humanity project, the Trailhead Town Homes, of which they'll have 18 units total on that site. And we just, they've also started a second duplex out of the nine. Village at Tamarack is under construction on Tamarack Parkway. They are still working on their infrastructure. The water and sewer lines are in, the service lines are being extended to each space. And then they're working on the drainage right now. So, that's coming along, not sure when units will actually be moving in there, but probably August, maybe September. The Rampart Town Homes is eight units, four duplexes, just across the street from Big O on Baldwin. Brecken Heights is located down by the Caldwell Banker Building and they're getting close to breaking ground with infrastructure. And then Sundance at Shining Mountain just completed And then Sundance at Shining Mountain just completed Long's Point with new curb and gutter and asphalt in their first duplex. There are twelve units remaining for that Sundance at Shining Mountain next to the golf course. So, yeah, one hundred and thirty-one new units that are either now coming out of the ground or are planned here shortly. So, and we get inquiries nearly every day about new developments or projects. It's really interesting times.
Sally, I got a question for you, doing with this. Th- this is phenomenal for, for the amount of activity you're seeing, especially single family. Are we reaching the possibility we might be reaching our residential tap cap?
No, right now, there's five hundred and fifty taps remaining within what the water supply that has been adjudicated and is developed. There's another five hundred and fifty taps to be developed. So we have a total of eleven hundred taps, residential taps, to build out. So we're not close to that.
Don't we have a, don't we have a yearly or an annual cap?
The yearly tap amount, based on the tap management plan, was set for this year at seventy-two. And those are single family. These are.
A mix?
A mix. Actually, they're, they're, they will all purchase a single family tap, but they fall under the multifamily bank. So most of these projects, including the Village at Tamarack, have already reserved their fifty-three taps out of the multifamily bank. And this is to allow for that developer to pull multiple building permits per month. Our tap management plan sets up a limit on the number of taps that a single-family home builder can pull per month, which is two. So we have a yearly cap. We have monthly restrictions and a multifamily bank of taps that are allocated or reserved through city council. So it's really been an amazing, smart growth, well-managed process over the two, actually, it's been nearly three decades that the tap management plan or, or policies have been in place.
When we look at places like behind Big O and those units, Trail Ridge, for example, they surely use less water than a, than, than a Homewood, as far as lawn and this and that. Is there any statistics? Is that trend getting more and more multi? Is that going to change our eventual build-out numbers?
So we have had better conservation of water, mainly because of the newer homes in the last couple of decades have low water fixtures. So we are seeing, and, and people are just much more conscientious, less, you know, turf landscaping, it's more of a zero-scape approach. So we're not wasting water on irrigation. Even the city put in artificial turf fields, so we wouldn't have to water those. So the per capita amount, which is really all the water use divided by the total population, is point one one seven acre feet per year. And we have seen that per capita value drop each year because of those conservation efforts and better, better management of the water system.
We had always referred to like the tap build-out as twelve thousand eight hundred people or something like that. Are they still using that type of statistic?
We are. So ten years ago, through the comprehensive plan, there was a mindful allocation of increasing the population by about a thousand, which was four hundred units. And right out of the chute, we had a zoning change for Trail, Trail Ridge Apartments, which added one hundred and sixty-eight units to our build-out scenario as part of those four hundred units. And we rezoned the Tamarack Parkway property from heavy service commercial light industrial to multifamily. And then we've seen the Village at Tamarack. So our, now our population target is thirteen thousand six hundred, recognizing that when we had twelve thousand six hundred, that there were an additional four hundred units with two point four seven people per unit. So it's, it's been interesting watching the tap management plan be implemented and our, we do a vacant lot land use study that monitors that build-out. And one of those recent conversations about new development is Lot Six at Tamarack Parkway for three apartment buildings, about another hundred, hundred and twenty-five units.
Anybody else have any questions about that?
So as, as you review the comprehensive plan for twenty thirty, envision twenty thirty, you'll see the work that Larry's committee has been working on with the goals, objectives, and actions. And so Larry, you might mention what your group is, is contemplating doing.
We, we, the Subcommittee on Utilities is very much aware that the tap management plan is a very good plan and that it regulates the number of taps for single family. The committee has recognized that there's more than just single family uses out there. So what, what we're recommending is that we look at everything, multifamily, commercial, institutional, whatever, and how much water they use. And we are also aware that we have a cap of population that we can serve with the amount of water we have. And to acquire new water or new water rights will limit us in the future on how far we can grow, simply because water is so expensive. And we're competing with the Colorado Springs, the Auroras of the world. And we have recognized that we're probably going to be very low on the total goal to be able to acquire water. We can, but it's going to cost a lot. So we're looking at an overall overhaul, not so much to the tap management regulation, because that's working really well, but to expand that, to include more than just single family. So you'll see that when we talk about it here in a couple of weeks.
Do we have commercial specifications for, for that too? If, if somebody comes into town and builds a new store or builds that? The way we do that for, for fixture flow and that and residential, are we doing the same thing at commercial?
It's done on a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
And it, it's very hard to project commercial use, but it's also a very small percentage of the overall use. We only have maybe two hundred and fifty taps that are allocated toward commercial buildings within the community as opposed to thirty-six, thirty-seven hundred residences.
Okay.
So that's why we aggregate all the use of water and then divide it by the population to get a per capita use. Because there's not just the commercial, the residential, there's also the public use. So of the city hall, the parks, the Woodland Aquatic Center, that has to be factored into the water use as well. And we've also factored in a cushion so that there is, but that's getting squeezed more and more, especially since we added the four hundred and the build-out population of thirteen thousand six hundred.
And major droughts and stuff like that, they all factor in.
Droughts are a big issue. And that's why the reservoir is so important because storage is critical.
And I know we're probably still working on a lot of that.
Yes.
Sally, so, so fifteen years ago, I moved here, a flatlander, moved to the mountains and didn't know crap about water. Just, you know, we, we just threw it on everything and we had perfect Kentucky bluegrass lawns. And, and when I moved here, I tried for like five years to have the perfect Kentucky bluegrass lawn and miserably failed. I know, I, I've gotten smarter.
We appreciate your water bill.
Yeah. So like four years ago, I just said, "Uncle," and, and quit watering everything. Quit watering my plants, quit watering the lawn. And what I found out is, yeah, my Kentucky bluegrass died off, but some other grasses came back in. And some plants died out, but the ones that lived, that I haven't watered in years, I just stuck new ones of those plants in those spots. And now, five years later, I got a lawn that I never water. I don't water my plants, don't water my lawn, and I think it looks pretty decent. It's different, but still good. How do we incent our community to do things like that where we don't water lawns and stuff like that? Where, where we really don't need to?
Don't we have a regulation about me square footage?
We do. So there is, for spray irrigation, it's quite generous. It's twenty-five hundred square feet that you could have a spray irrigated bluegrass lawn.
Okay, yeah.
But.
My neighbor to the right of me has got, their lawn is sprinkled and the one across the street is sprinkled and it's going every night. And I used to be envious, and now I look at him, I'm thinking, "Why are you doing that?" But, but, and, and I understand why, because I used to be there, but how do we incent a different behavior?
We're at a stage two. It's not going every night. It should be going no more than two days.
Well, it might not be going every night, but it's.
Two days a week.
They have a nice green lawn, so they're watering it a fair amount.
Jim Schultz and Kip put that Waterwise program together. And if you recall that, that goes back, what, probably a decade? And that thing really worked. You can only water on certain days and all that type of stuff.
Apparently, I wasn't listening.
We really brought down the water use. We had signs all over the community doing, and it worked. It really did.
Yeah, so a big part of this is education. To be able to emphasize, we live in a semi-arid environment and water is liquid gold in Colorado. So, so we do have to be very conscientious about how.
Yeah, I was just, and I'm just spitballing, and, you know, could we do something like with the, with the local landscape companies or something like that? If you decide to pull out your sprinkler system, the city will give ten percent off of your water bill for a period of time to help pay for the, the money you're going to spend with the, those businesses. At least try to incent monetarily.
We're in the Waterwise program.
Yeah.
The Water Department offered low-flow toilets and different stuff to help the people. Nobody took advantage of it.
Really? Okay.
Remember that thing? There wasn't a huge amount of people that did that. Am I wrong?
I don't remember that.
Oh, yeah. I remember.
I remember that other communities sometimes will provide low-flow toilets or incentivize those. But I don't believe that we actually implemented.
I remember Kip talking about that.
He, he probably talked about it as a potential option, but we've never actually proposed or offered that to the citizens.
And something like that would be available.
Yeah.
There's a lot of old houses that are still three gallons every time you flush it.
Yeah.
Well, we've got inside the house or outside the house for saving water. You know, whether you're running your lawn or whatever you're doing, yeah.
It all saves water.
Yeah.
Because it, like you said, it's our number one resource by a mile.
Yes.
Yeah, water conservation technology has really evolved over the last few decades. And it's come to the point where, you know, that the fixtures themselves can save water. I mean, you're going to be using it, but the amount of water that typically.
There's technology, you don't even have to put water in a tub.
Right?
It burns it up and all that kind of stuff. It does a really good job of that.
You don't even have to.
Our committee's been talking about those sympathies, yes.
Good.
Next, Anya.
So I do want to just mention where we are with the comprehensive plan update. Monday evening is our last meeting for the eight subcommittees that will be at the cultural center. It will be nice to have in-person discussions with, around the roundtables with each of these committees. Our consultants are going to have your chapter drafted for you to look at at that meeting, just to do a quick review. There are quite a few action items that are redundant throughout the plan. I reviewed a sixty-eight-page, small font draft, and it had everything in it that each subcommittee was proposing. They will be removing those redundancies. So if you don't see all of your recommended action items, don't worry, they're in somebody else's action item, so, or chapter. So that's being done, will, it will be interesting Monday evening. And then the next step is to refer the draft to the planning commission. And on your desk is the schedule for four work sessions beginning on July eighth. We will have those draft chapters sent to you by July first, so you can spend your Fourth of July holiday looking at them. But it will start with the land use growth, chapter, housing, community character, design, and city finance. And then on July twenty-second, we do have a case that month night. It is the amendment to Gold Hill Square South for the school charter, public charter school. So only three chapters you'll take a look at, starting after that hearing, which will be economic development, tourism, sustainability, parks, trails, and open space. Then in August, on the twelfth, water and wastewater, public safety, emergency management, and resiliency, which Mike Nakai is the chair of that group. They've worked really hard to bring that up to current day expectations and vision for the future, also adding a resiliency section. This was required by our grant that we received from the Division of Local Affairs, was to add resiliency. And I actually learned something because I was always thinking that resiliency was to be able to be prepared for any natural or man-made disasters. But what it really is, it's how quickly you can recover or react after those events. So they've done an amazing job with the help of Dawn Angel, our Teller County Emergency Manager, and our local police department staff that have worked really well together on that. Then the last workshop will be on August twenty-sixth to cover transportation, drainage, community well-being, arts, culture, and community heritage. So you have a lot of work ahead of you. I'm sorry.
Could you tell me a little bit how this works too? I haven't tried to do all that much with this particular group, but I've been oftentimes on committees that are drafting stuff. And some of this was the subcommittee seeing how they're doing it too, but we're taking with a, they had more, more, more time for a smaller set. We've got the whole thing to do. How does it work in practice as far as this? I mean, it, it would almost strike me as the planning commission should react to certain things. What are our concerns? And then have like, we should create our own little subcommittees for people to go drafting stuff too, if, if there is drafting necessary. If there's not, then we don't.
There really shouldn't be a lot of drafting associated with this. These chapters have been vetted pretty well through the subcommittees. And so now you will take a look at the whole thing, the whole document, and just red-flag any of the goals, objectives. and just red-flag any of the goals, objectives, or actions that you feel need to be drilled down on.
Okay. Well, all right. Well, that's, all right. Item one-point-three-point-twelve or something, we need to, red flag needs to be drilled down. How does that happen? Is that, how does it come? This is, I don't mean to bore you, but I'm worried about how we revise and approve dozens and dozens of pages of...
Yeah, my goal is to put it up on the screen and we go page by page. You should have all these chapters at least a week ahead of time, so you'll be able to read through. If there are any, if anything really jumps off the page for you, then as we're going through page by page, then you'll address that.
Are we going to do that as a planning?
Yes.
Not as an entire group?
Nope. As the Planning Commission, and we're inviting the chairman and the scribe of each subcommittee
To come.
to come, so that if you... You have a particular question about an action that doesn't make sense, they'll be able to give you the justification.
I can see where there are some, just like you said, redundancy in actions. I can also see conflicts in actions between the various groups. And that would be part of the planning commission's role and duty, I would assume, to kind of try to find that compromise or find, find some kind of middle ground, if you will, when two things conflict, that we'd be the arbit...
No, it wasn't just finding the arbitrary. It's, if there's not that much new wording that's necessary, it works. But if there's a lot of new text to have to be done too, that's really tough to do as, as a group.
No, we shouldn't have to be redrafting.
And Sally, I think it's very important too that, and I don't know if it's physically possible, but I'd like to be able to see everything, if I can compare it, one section with another. And maybe as we go through, we kind of introduce ourselves to each of the sections, we can identify those second things, say, "This needs a little bit more work."
Yeah, we'll...
A week ahead is pretty limited in that sense too.
So...
I know you'll do it.
Pretty sure we can probably get you the entire document shortly after the eighth.
Okay.
You'll start with these four chapters, but Christie Bruce is working on it very hard. And today, they even showed me how the graphics are going to look. It's beautiful.
They're doing a lot of the busywork, of course.
Busy work. They're doing...
You know what I mean.
Professional, technical work. Yeah. And so during the work session this evening, I just wanted to spend about fifteen minutes off-camera, off-Zoom, sharing with you...
Can we do that here rather than move, because there's nobody out there?
Yeah, we can.
And we can, what, Mike can come up here and sit and watch?
Yes, we can do that. So I just want to introduce you tonight to the Future Land Use Map. That's really important. It doesn't have to be finalized right away, but it does have to be finalized by August twenty-sixth, when we review the last section of the chapter.
It's eleven after eight. Let's meet here at eight fifteen. That'll give you time to set everything up, go to the bathroom. Mike, if you want to come up here and, you know, on the chairs here, so you can see it from this side, rather than being so far away, you're more than welcome to do that. Meanwhile, we need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Yes, adjourn.
Give me good points.
Thank you.
And I think...